Okay, I guess we're all here and accounted for. Excuse me. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It is November 12th, 2013. And welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting. It is the night after Veterans Day. And we had a really, again, beautiful service sponsored by the Red Hook VFW, Post 776-5, at the Memorial Park in the village of Red Hook. And it's always a wonderful thing to be there and to honor our veterans, not only those who didn't come home, but those who were willing to serve. And it was a lovely evening, contrary to tonight, which is pretty cold. We're going to move fairly quickly, I think, because I do not have a supervisor's report. Deb is not in today. And so I think what we'll do is move right into the clerk's report, if you have one, Sue.
Yes, I do. Town Clerk Monthly Report, October 1st through October 31st, 2013. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, New York State Ag and Markets, we remitted $65. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, An amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, For a total state, county, and local revenue of $3,794.50. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk down at Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you. One of the things we can certainly do tonight is to congratulate three of the five of us who sit up here for having been re-elected for another four-year term. Hooray for the Town Clerk and the two town board members on the far end.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you. We are very, very happy to be ready to do business again for another four years. Congratulations all.
Looks like we're ready to go.
It does make me happy that we're all here.
It makes me happy we're all here, too. So, and I know that, you know, in spite of there not being opposition, it doesn't necessarily mean that it isn't an unnerving experience to have your name out there and hoping that someone will vote for you, even if you have no opposition. So, congratulations, one and all. You did beautifully. We're very proud of you. I guess we'll start with announcements. I have a few, but Bill, have you any announcements tonight?
No.
Okay. Harry?
No, I don't.
Okay. And Jim, have you?
I do not, Sue.
Susie, how about you?
Nothing from me.
Okay, I've got a couple. And just bear with me, because some of them are self-evident. The first has to do with the long-awaited-for demolition of the old highway garage. We can proudly say tonight it is immaculate and gone. The highway parking lot is totally cleaned up. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank Washington Estate Transport, Inc., who are from Rosendale, who did such a wonderful job with that demolition. It was totally professionally done, and the results are amazing. I wanted to thank Amy Haye of Crawford and Associates Engineers, who oversaw the project on our behalf. She was great to work with. At home, Teresa Burke, as always, is right there for us. Ted Cudsey, our purchasing agent, was around all the time, shepherding things along and worrying about it. Harry, you were instrumental. Steve Cole, our building inspector. Chris Shaw, thank you for your part in it. Town Board and Town Clerk for agreeing to support it. And EnviroClean, who watched over it to make sure that it was done correctly and safely. So altogether, it was a huge effort, a little bit of effort on everyone's part, big effort on Washington Estate's transport. And we were just thrilled with the results. And we will have now an opportunity to review the space we have and develop a plan for the future for this entire, for want of a better word, campus. We do have need for parking lot and parking space and other functions. So we're looking forward to putting that together after we talk with people about the how-to and what is needed by each and every one of us. The second thing has to do with the Shared Services Grant that the Town of Red Hook was awarded through the Duchess County Shared Services Grant Competition with other towns and villages. We were granted $79,000 to study a collaboration among us in Red Hook. That would be the Town of Red Hook, the Village of Red Hook, and the Village of Tivoli are going to look at ways that we can be more efficient, more effective, eliminating duplication of service, but still, and hopefully, providing better service. So we will be embarking on that effort. Harry is helping me with that, and thank you for agreeing to do that. Mayor Cranna is going to be with us. We met today with him for the first time. And Mayor Ed Blandell from the Village of Red Hook. And we'll be meeting regularly to explore before a request for quotes goes out exactly what each of the municipalities is looking for and what their needs are and how they believe we can move forward with a practical solution to some of each of our problems. And I think from everything we can glean from the state and the county, we are expected to, we are called upon to collaborate whenever possible. And since highway is our largest expenditure in all three budgets, it makes sense to take a really close look at this and see if there are ways that we can save some stress and save some money and still deliver very effective services. Teresa, I wanted to thank you for your support in all of this, because you're going to be key in all of it. And I know you won't hesitate to tell us if we're off-base. And I appreciate that. And I know everyone will. This, today, because I was out late last week, I didn't get this until today, but I've been waiting for it. I've known for maybe, I don't know, six weeks, I guess, that Red Hook is part of a very exciting new project that is funded by the Department of Energy. The Department of Energy put out a $2.4 million initiative to have proposals to lower costs of installing solar. And among those who responded to that challenge was CUNY of New York, the City University of New York, who called us, called on us, Red Hook, as a very interested, interested and interesting community who had put a lot of effort already in green energy initiatives. And they asked us, would we be interested in being part of this pilot program, should they receive the award? And it was a national thing, and, you know, everybody said, well, you know, we would love to do it, thinking the likelihood is pretty remote. Well, lo and behold, I got a call, as I said, from a woman who is at the University of New York, who was my contact person and our contact person, who said it looked like they were going to be recipients. They had undercover announcement. It was not to be announced, don't tell anybody, until the Department of Energy issues the press release. That's how these things go. And then Governor Cuomo introduces his piece of the announcement, and then we can make it public. So I am able, since I got word of this through both the Department of Energy and CUNY and Governor Cuomo's office, that we have, we are involved, or will be involved, in this initiative to lower costs of installing solar. And the gist of it is that it's a project to explore ways to streamline the solar installation process in the state and lower the costs of solar by using innovative financing solutions and information technology solutions. And again, it was developed by the City University of New York under what's called the Governor's New York Sun Initiative. What's really tickled me was on the second page of Governor Cuomo's announcement is here are the 16 municipalities who have been selected to participate. And they range from Albany, Ithaca, Rochester, Poughkeepsie, Clifton Park, Yonkers, Huntington, Warwick, Southampton, Syracuse, Schenectady, White Plains, New York City, Town of Hempstead, and Village of Warwick, and the Town of Red Hook, one of 16, which I thought was just great for us to have been selected to be part of this. It's very exciting. Steve Cole will be involved and be learning. We'll all be learning a lot. It's going to be, it's going to be a whole new involvement. And the CAC, and in particular Lori Huestead, whose job it is at Bard College to be involved in energy collaborations and installations, that's what she does for position, has agreed to be the contact person, because there's no possible way I could. I have, I'm just not equipped, nor I think is anyone here on the board. But we have this wonderful resource in our CAC chairperson who has agreed to be the contact person for this. But she'll be calling on us, I'm sure, and you'll be hearing more. So congratulations to all of us who have supported everything we've done that has to do with the solar panels on the town hall, on the firehouse. You know, obviously, not every town has pulled it together and done the things that we have done. And the recognition is very, very nice. And hats off to all of those who, behind the scenes, were working on it all these years. And more to come on that, I'm sure. And I think, for me, that's about it for now. Other than to say that we, I should make this announcement again, that town hall will be closed the Wednesday before Thanksgiving at noon and be closed on Thanksgiving Day and the Friday. So it's going to be a long week for employees. And if people are thinking to come get licenses or whatever, don't do it then, because we won't be here. Even Sue won't be here.
That's right.
Who is always here.
Yeah.
And Christmas, we will be closed, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, all day. New Year's, the same period, December 31st, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. Those are the things that I had. Any questions from anybody about any of that?
No.
Sue, that means that our meeting that Wednesday night before Thanksgiving will be?
We, this is the only meeting we're having this month, right? And we typically have had one meeting a month in November and December because of the holidays. And we will, we will follow that this year as well.
So Friday, you're closed to, Friday after Thanksgiving?
Friday after Thanksgiving is not, yes, I'm sorry. It is closed. Yes, it is closed.
Oh, it is closed, okay.
It is closed. Yep. Half-day the day before, all-day Thanksgiving, and Friday after Thanksgiving. And we've found that so many people travel, there's very little business to do, and it makes sense to give the employees that day. Okay. All right. So, public comment. Is there any public comment before we begin the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move right along. I am so very proud of this board for working behind the scenes to finish with a reasonable amount of time, the budget for the year ahead. And we had our final budget meeting last week and approved the budget for 2014. Most people know, we voted to override the cap. And the reason for that, I think, should be noted. The reasons for that should be noted, so that people will understand it is not operating expenses that drives these overrides. But some of the efforts that we have been committed to, such as purchase of development rights, we had almost $45,000 in new purchase of development rights commitment for the year ahead. The demolition of the garage was an additional amount of money. It may be as high as $70,000. We're hoping we can pare that down. That, we also had a rec park tractor that simply had to be part of our capital plan for the year ahead. We had monies expended for Sizemee Bridge that was a result of the storm and the flooding. And in all, our capital debt was almost $93,000. That was almost impossible for us to carve out of an operating budget that was tight, anyway. And that explains the override to the public. I would be happy to answer any questions individually from the public, if anyone wants to call me. I'd be happy to talk with them about it. This is an extremely conservative board, and I believe that they have done a great job. And Rose has done a great job with employees, getting department heads to hold the line as best they can. But I think it's our firm belief, all of us, that we would like the state to reconsider the fact that municipalities may not exempt the capital expenditures from that override, where, in the case of schools, that those capital expenses are exempted from their override. That would be huge to us if that were true. And we believe that there are long-term expenses that the town simply must invest in. They're not, they're not a negative, as one sometimes thinks of as expense, but they are an investment that the town is making for the future of all its residents. The roads, the bridges, the vehicles that keep us safe in the winter by plowing. All of this is important stuff. And just to pare it down to common, everyday terms that people will be able to, I think, understand without a lot of numbers, we looked at the budget, looked at the amount of increase, and we said, let's say, the average home in Duchess County is $260,000. And in Red Hook, that is an increase in the village, in the villages, of 18 cents per thousand. 18 cents per thousand is the increase on your home. If you live in the town outside the villages, it is nine, nine cents per hundred thousand of, or per thousand of your home value. So while it is almost a 6% increase, a large part of it is the capital expense and the purchase of development rights, which we are obligated to do. And we make no bones about it. We're very proud of how we handled this budget. It's a good budget. And Rose, again, I want to thank you for your part in it. And I'm sorry Debbie isn't here, because she, she was immensely.
Great.
Yeah, she was, she's just tremendous. So if anyone has an internet access, you will find beautiful charts that show where the money goes in color that Deb has prepared for us. And I think you'll be pleased to see the professionalism of this budget. It's been filed with New York State. And Sue, if Deb is not back this week, I may ask you to help me file it with the county by the end of the week or first part of next week. I think it has to be there by next Wednesday, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody got anything on the budget that they'd like to talk about?
No.
Jim?
No.
You did a perfect job.
Perfect is hard to believe. Thank you. Well, we worked hard on it. I've already spoken about the Duchess County Shared Services Grant. We met for the first time this morning, the mayors, and Harry and I. And we will continue. And Teresa will be part of that discussion. And we will do our very best to make sure that everybody's concerns and needs are taken into account and that we bring the public along with this plan as it develops, so that there are no surprises for the people of the Town of Red Hook or the Village of Red Hook or the Village of Tivoli. So you'll hear much more about that as the months unfold. I think it's an 18-month program. It's fairly short. It's not, we don't have a lot of time to get this done. Okay. Bill O'Neil has been talking with the intermunicipal task force about the traditional neighborhood street standards. And I'm going to ask you to lead the discussion on that, if you will.
Okay. There's a draft, a four-page draft, that was created by the attorney, by the town planner, Green Plan, Inc., with the task force. And it's labeled Traditional Neighborhood Street Standards, dated October 28th, 2013, four pages. And so it kind of sets forth what would be the proposed standards for the traditional neighborhood district created as part of a development under the Centers of Green Space Plan in what we call the Traditional Neighborhood Districts. The Town of Red Hook has not ever had anything like this before, so it's kind of new ground. When some developers have proposed to do a traditional neighborhood district within the Town of Red Hook, and we have one particular on the, on the table now, off Old Farm Road in the Town of Red Hook, there's been, of course, a lot of discussion about what they would like to propose as the developers, and then what the town or the zoning will allow. So it's this kind of a dialogue, which is presently ongoing. This four-page draft addresses the question of the street standards that would be applied within the traditional neighborhood district. And it has been considered that this would be proposed to the town board as a resolution to amend or as an addendum to the road specifications of the Town of Red Hook. The town hallway supervisor and our town has for years functioned under a document which is called the, Town of Red Hook Highway Specifications. It was adopted in February of 1992. So it's a little bit, some years ago. And it was last revised in 1995. So it has been proposed that this four-page draft, if it's appropriate, would be recommended to be adopted by resolution by the town board as an addendum to the Town of Red Hook Highway Specifications. That question is being addressed by the attorney for the town, who spoke to Christine Shaw today. And she's got the copy of the proposed draft. There'll be a further meeting this Friday with the highway supervisor, Teresa Burke, and with Michelle Gregg from Green Plan at the intermunicipal task force meeting to fine tune this four-page draft. There's some changes already that have been made to the proposed draft, but we'll be finalizing them this Friday. So it would be hoped, I think, that this Friday, perhaps, a final proposal would come out of the task force and then be presented to the town board for consideration. And, you know, it would, it would appear as though we might be able to do this by resolution to amend those highway specifications without having to go through a secret process and public hearings, that sort of thing.
And we'd have to do it secret.
We'd have to do it secret. Well, whatever, anyway, whatever we could do it, without a lot of expense, basically.
Anybody have any questions?
I guess we probably should note, and as much as you mentioned, us being one of the 16 townships, including Warwick Grove, that you mentioned. But the task force, some of the task force members, and Harry could tell you more, but went actually to Warwick Grove, which is a planned adult community, PAC, as opposed to a traditional neighborhood development district. But it's pretty much the same principle. You know, they've applied the same architectural standards and applications for walkability and the kind of attractiveness of the development that the planners seek. And so my understanding is that the members of the task force, thanks to Teresa, who will be going again, but already has also gone there to survey what they've done in Warwick Grove, came back with some definite ideas of how we need to modify our proposal to fit the practical aspects of their, of their development down there. So it's kind of a nice work in progress, and we're learning from what others do. And again, our town supervisor's been out of her way to go to these other towns to see what their problems are. And you talk about having to plow the snow, for example, in these developments, or, and things like that. So we hope by, by December that we'll have something, perhaps, before the board to consider.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody, any question? I noticed that the design speed is 20 miles per hour on these features, or in the street features. First thing out is 20 miles per hour. That's even slower than the village limit in any of those areas that we recommended most recently.
I had that same question for Michelle. She said the design is 20 miles per hour, not the speed limit that's posted.
Okay.
So the way the streets are designed, you really can't go much faster than 20 miles per hour.
Okay. I see.
And that's what that part means.
I see. I see that it does say design speed.
Yep.
And I didn't, okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
I have the same question.
Thank you. Okay, well, it'll be nice to have that settled. And so maybe the next meeting, I believe, is December 10th? We can hope to see that then.
Yes. I have it scheduled.
Okay.
So we'll do the secret and so on, and hopefully not have to do a public hearing? Is that a potential?
If it doesn't have to be under a local law, then there would not have to be a public hearing and the expense of that.
Or we do the secret, then we can pass the regulation.
Yeah, right. I think that's what the idea is.
To it all in one minute?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, Bill. And thank you, Harry. Teresa was the highway superintendent, who went down there a couple of times to check it out. And we thank you for taking the time to do that. So we're at the point where we can move right into board reports. And I don't think we have a huge number tonight. But let's start and see where we go. Ethics board, I don't think, is met, nor has had the need to, which is a good thing. Planning board, does anyone have a report from the planning board? Zoning board?
The zoning board meets tomorrow evening. They have a review and appeal, and they have a public hearing on Carport. And then they're reviewing two other appeals is on their agenda for tomorrow evening.
Uh huh. Okay. Thank you. Department reports. We have the, is there an animal control officer? Brenda is not, Councilwoman Kegel is not with us tonight. Does anyone have any information about the animal control officer that she may have passed on to either any of us or all of you?
No.
Just to say that we had the grand opening of the dog park with the town of Rhinebeck two Saturdays ago and those little bow-wows were so happy that it was, it was just a pleasure to be there. I hated to leave, they were having so much fun. There are two separate and distinct areas for them to run and play. One is for dogs under 30 pounds and the other is any dogs that are over 30 pounds. And the entrance is very safe. The dogs go in through a double gate. You go in one gate and then let them off a lead and then they open the second gate and they bounce in to this area where their other puppies playing and it's pandemonium. They just, you would think they're all best friends. It's the weirdest thing, but they just love to play. And by the end of the hour, the dogs' tongues were hanging out. They were so excited and so exhausted from all the exercise and the owners were just delighted, so we're very happy. And Paul Piastro was our chair on this end and he and his son did a lot of the very heavy lifting of setting. I've forgotten how many posts they said, 80 posts or something? It was awful. In shale, in shale, right? So they really worked hard and it's a beautiful setting in a wooded area. It was a gorgeous day, so all had a great time. And so the dog park is an accomplishment, thanks to Paul and the committee from Rhinebeck. Bruce Washburn, who is the deputy mayor of Rhinebeck, was the first person to think the thought. I have no assessor's report, attorney.
There is an assessor's.
Is there an assessor's report? I beg your pardon.
I think we all had it.
Okay. Is it in here?
Here, here. I had an extra copy.
Oh, thank you.
For some reason.
Maybe you have mine.
Could be.
Jim, do you want to read this for me? The assessors, have you got, have you got that in here?
Yeah.
Would you mind reading it?
No, I'll read it. It's stated today, interesting, 11, 12, 13, isn't that kind of the?
It is, yeah.
But assessor's status report to the town board. Number one, we are continuing data collection and verification efforts on commercial properties. The, number two, the pre-decisional collaboration process has been started and we are working with our state regional representatives to begin the 2014 modeling process. Number three, all of our small claims assessment reviews have been settled and there are only two outstanding certiori cases to be adjudicated. Number four, exemption renewal forms are being prepared for mailing next month. Number five, meet with the Red Hook seniors at the firehouse to discuss STAR program and the registration process, so. Number six, he's going to continue to meet with taxpayers by appointment to discuss their assessment concerns. My staff and I remain committed to continued fair and equitable assessment practices and look forward to continued service to this community, respectfully Scott Hobson, our assessor.
Thank you, Jim. And it should be noted that congratulations should go to Scott as well. He is not only the appointed assessor in Red Hook, but he was elected to the position of one of three assessors and chairs the assessment board in the town of Mylan and he ran unopposed also. And congratulations to him for that achievement. Debbie, as I said, is out. I have, I'm sure you all know how indispensable she is and the work she did on the budget. The budget officer, do you have anything, any strength left in you to say anything after the budget process?
You've heard enough from me.
Not at all, not at all. It was, it was just great to have you and thank you. Your insights have always been appreciated. Building inspector, I have a report of permits. There are seven open permits. And there are, there were 50 inspections this past month for the month of October through, no, let's see, from October 23rd to November 6th, there were seven permits open. So this is really not a month, but it's less than that, two weeks. Fifty total inspections for the month. And they are, include Tivoli. There were six searches. A total of $950 in fees collected, permits and otherwise. And that's from the building inspector's department. Grant applications, we've talked about that. Highway, Teresa, you have something for us tonight?
Yes, I do. I have bid results. For the materials and ice control abrasives, hot mix asphalt, we went out to bid and I have bid results and my recommendations are as follows. For ice control abrasives, the company is A. Cala Russo and Sun Incorporated. For hot mix asphalt, A. Cala Russo and Sun Incorporated. Tree removal, Everhart Tree Care. Materials, there are several that have different, several companies have different items that we'll be purchasing because their lowest bids are scattered across the board. So for Callan and Quarry, we'll be getting crushed stone. Red Wing Properties will be topsoil and lashed gravelstone. And A. Cala Russo and Sun Incorporated will be all other materials. And I gave you the breakdown of the bids from your, attached to your letter of recommendation that shows the prices and the results that came in. The second is the bid results for the 10-foot sander body that we went out to bid for. And there were only two bids that were returned. Hudson River Truck and Floor, their bid was $9,179. And SWAC Incorporated was $8,250. So based on these bid results, we recommend that the bid will be rewarded, awarded to SWAC Incorporated. And the bid results are also attached to your letter. And that's.
How did the prices compare to last year just off?
Pretty good. Cala Russo was very aggressive in their pricing and the sand, the ice control abrasives dropped quite a bit. You can see on your sheet, I think Red Wing was pretty close to last year's price, $9. It might have been $9.50 a ton. And Cala Russo for picked up ice control is $7.35 a ton. So even with the mileage difference and there are no tolls for either location, Cala Russo will, it will show quite a savings for next year, depending on how much we have to use. Last two years, we haven't used a lot because it's been relatively mild winters. So it does help.
Question. Teresa, the two that were bid processed were the ice control and the hot mix? Is that right?
Yes.
And do you have the hot mix results here?
Yes, they should be on the.
I just am not seeing them. Maybe I'm missing a page, I don't know.
Do you have a page with three quotes on it?
This one with the.
What's the top one? That's the hot mix, the dense base, the dense binder, the chin, the top.
That price is compared to last year too, isn't it?
Pardon me?
For what we paid last year?
For the hot mix asphalt?
Yeah.
The price is pretty much the same, the $65, but you'll note on the bottom, it's $5.93 per ton based on the liquid asphalt index for the month of October 2013, which means that that's the price of the barrel of oil. So next year, it could be $65 a ton adjusted by the increase in the price of a barrel of oil. If it goes down, we'll be paying less and if it goes up, we'll be paying more. So that's how that works. You can find a different price each week depending on the market. But everybody has the same increases and decreases across the board. So if our starting price is $65 a ton with them and $73 a ton with someone else, we're always going to save money by going with this quote. Anything else?
Are you looking for an award approval from the board then?
Is that what I'm asking for?
Why? Bid project you are.
Okay.
And when you have projects that are subject to the public bid process, you need to have the board approve that?
Now, this, this is just prices for stuff that Teresa purchased. Yeah, but don't we often pass a resolution to accept all bids and so?
No, we have two different resolutions. This is going to be between us, but we have a resolution that approves the portions that are subject to public bid because they are above the threshold and that's typically the ice control and the hot mix. And then the other items, we authorize her to purchase from the designated vendor at the specified price. So these are, this is essentially a menu for her to purchase from.
Right.
But they are, you know, a designated menu that's based on her bidding process, so.
So we'll have those.
But they're two different. Yeah. We could do that.
Yeah, there's no, there's no rush for that.
Okay.
Knowing that there was only one meeting this month, I would like to put this before you. And then you can finish the process next month.
Okay, well, the people are pretty similar then, okay.
You have plenty of abrasive between now and December.
Pardon me?
You have plenty of abrasive between now and December?
Well, we can't purchase at this price until January 1st anyway.
That's why there's no rush.
Yeah.
So we'll have it on the agenda?
It'll be on the agenda December 10th.
Okay.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, Harry, do you have a purchasing report?
I do not. Purchasing activity, having been involved almost daily, is mostly been getting the Ponset Hut down, which was a very successful venture. Actually, I happened to be standing there when unexpectedly the last part of the framework self-destructed, just folded down gently onto the, onto the foundation to be picked up and carted away.
Looked like a big skeleton for a little while.
Didn't it?
He didn't expect it to come down like that. He was taking it down a little piece at a time and it literally just folded in on itself and flattened right out on the foundation and they carted it away.
They did a great job.
They did.
It's immaculate out there. It looks like it was never there.
And we were so glad for the weather. The weather was with us. No high winds, there was no rain and snow and sleet and hail. It was great. Timing was good. Thank you for your part in that, Harry. I have a police report from the Red Hook Police Department and the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department. And the total incidents for the Red Hook Police Department were 76 with six arrests and 12 tickets issued. And in the case of the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, there were a total of 94 incidents for the month of October. And again, they are every conceivable type police incident that we often know about. So we're grateful to both those departments for providing the town of Red Hook with such good service. Water department, Jim, do you have anything from that?
No, I haven't, not since the last month, the report I read, so I haven't.
Okay. So we can move right into committee reports. Bill, have you got anything for Ag and Open Space?
Well, the Ag and Open Space Committee met at a regular time last month and there was a presentation on the subject of taxes in the state, you know, assessments for farm properties. And the committee discussed that at length. And I haven't seen the report of that meeting. I don't believe it's been published yet, but it will be this month. And then they meet again in December.
Okay. Thank you. I don't believe we have a Community Preservation Farm and Protection Committee report this time. Is there a C E C report? Does anyone, is anyone carrying that? That would be Brenda typically. Okay, more, more to come on that then. Design review, hammer, it's quiet. Disaster preparedness is okay. Economic Development Committee, does anyone have anything there? I know there was a letter.
Here's, here's the letter.
Yeah, it's in our packet up front, I think. And. Is this the one you had?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And really, it's a letter from a resident who is concerned about the local economy and business space. And he's got long-term business experience. His name is Jacob Bump and he's applying to become a member of the Economic Development Committee. He believes his experience would be an asset to the committee and works to retain as well as attract new businesses to the town. There is, I think there are openings on that committee. I'm sure there are.
There is, and he's been coming to the meetings.
Good.
He's very much engaged. He's, he owns the chocolate factory now and has a major investment in the community as a, as a business owner.
Would you like to make that motion to appoint?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, that we appoint Jacob Bump.
Okay.
As a member of the Economic Development Committee. And it'll be the meeting tomorrow morning.
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
So wasn't there some, isn't that your letter in the mail from the chairman of that committee concerning the assessment to commercial properties or something?
Yes.
Well, that is an issue that they asked me to look into. And it's based on the C P F. And the C P F, commercial properties are taxed on the same formula as residential properties. And the formula is based on the median price of homes, which now is about $250,000.
Right.
Or $260,000. So commercial properties sell everywhere from $50,000 to you name it, tens of millions. And we've had some substantial sales here. So the, the commercial properties are taking a very substantial hit with that tax. And it's, that tax is established and created by state law. So to make any changes, it would have to be done at a state level.
Right, and I read the letter, I said, that's not something we can just change or you can't forward the assessments, you don't forward that either, so.
I told them I would talk to, and I guess if any, any of us have a chance to talk to any one of our state representatives, that, and this is, this has an impact on several towns in the statewide, that the state take that into consideration and take a look at it from that end. They would have to do the work and do the analysis.
So it would be a state-enabling legislation that would change it just the way the first legislation allowed it?
They would have to alter the legislation.
Have you talked with either of the legislators?
I have not yet. This came up about a week ago.
But you have agreed to do that?
I have agreed to do that, yes.
That's great, thank you.
And I will talk to both of our senator and councilman. And I will talk to both of our senator and councilman and assemblyman.
Not an easy thing to modify that.
No, no, it is not.
Because you'd have to have some scale or something.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and it's almost fantasy thinking to see how do you do that in an appropriate and fair way with... Just because of the numbers of what I said, you can have a fifty thousand dollar sale, and you can have... I mean, like an IBM sale, they sell a factory for tens of millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Or buy one, or... Well, same thing.
Okay, well, will you report back to us then?
Yeah.
Contact them. It won't be a quick and easy fix, that I know.
No, it can't be.
Because I remember working on that when we first developed that state-enabling legislation, and there was a lot of communication back and forth between our senator and the settlement and made to get that done. Intermunicipal task force, Bill?
Well, I pretty much gave a report on the standards, the traditional neighborhood district standards that were reviewed by task forces past month, and their field trips to Warwick Grove, and that's the report.
Thank you. Steve, could we call on you for any comments from Panda? Do we have any news from Panda?
I'm not current with the... I missed their last meeting, actually, so...
Okay, okay. I know that we are... My office is in the process of contacting the various partners of Northern Dutchess Public Access and trying to get a meeting with Time Warner, who have assigned a new corporate person, or a new municipal representative from Time Warner, who has given me some dates. He is willing to come from Middletown and meet with us, and it's... Will be the first time that we have gotten Rhinebeck and the town and village of Rhinebeck and the village of Tivoli and the village of Red Hook together on this issue, but we do want to negotiate that contract, and it's long, long overdue. And I think we finally have a number of people who are very interested in seeing that happen, so I'm very happy about that. Bill, you're kind of the liaison to that.
Yeah, I'm available whenever.
Very happy to have you be part of that. Thank you for your work on that. Rec. Mission, who's going to carry the ball?
I have a report. It's a multi-page report outlining everything that had to be done to close up the recreation park. Went to their meeting last night, the commission. They're talking about, at this point, about the future and some of the things we talked about and the events that they may add to their repertoire of summer events there, some of which might turn out to be a fundraiser. And as I say, in wrapping up the season, John's been doing a lot of repair work in preparation for next season, like putting a new roof on the baseball dugouts and things like that.
Right.
And on and on it goes. It's like maintaining an estate, maintaining that property.
It really is. Who does it with such aplomb and never complains, just tears into the next project, whatever that may be? He's quite an amazing employee and director of that whole process. St. Margaret's Committee, I don't have anything new on that unless someone else does.
No, just the...
Okay. And Brenda, again, would be senior services. I don't have anything on that. The Sister Services Committee did meet this month, and we will be meeting again next month. The goal is to better inform the community of all of the things that are going on among the students at Bard and students abroad in Israel and Palestine and the interrelationships that have been developing. And so I believe in January, they, the committee, will be coming and talking to us about that, telling us and telling the public what's been developing, because I think it's kind of a well-kept secret in our community. The Bard community knows about it, but our community isn't quite as aware as it could be. And so they'll be coming, hopefully in February, I believe. January, the students are abroad, working in Palestine and Israel. So it'll be in February when they get back that we'll hear from them. But very wonderful, wonderful work that they're involved in, and a great committee, by the way. Trails Committee, anyone? Tree Committee? Nancy's absent.
She gave that long report last...
She did, she did. And zoning review committee, Bill, you've got a meeting coming up.
Yes, they meet this Thursday, and they'll be addressing some issues of importance.
That's great, that's great. I'm glad to see that kick in again. All good stuff. Okay. Is there any other business that anyone would like to bring up? We will go into attorney-client. Is there any public comment or questions? We thank you for coming. Have a good evening. Stay warm, be safe, and let's hope that the weather holds. Teresa, I'm sure no one hopes it more than you.
See, we can't possibly be close to done, it's only...
I know, isn't that amazing? So I move that we go into attorney-client?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for your time.
We need a little bit of elaboration on the tracer wire.
On the... Excuse me?
Tracer line, tracer wire that was described.
Okay.
I don't know what that is and where it goes to the entire length. To the residents?
Yes, it goes from the curb stop, one foot below the ground, along the line of the trench to the hook up to the house, right.
Okay, a foot below being a foot below the five-foot depth?
No, a foot below the surface grade.
The surface.
Yep, yep.
What is it physically that wires? What it is?
I'm sure...
It's a metal tape.
It's a standard thing.
It's like a flat metal tape. The purpose is so you don't dig up your water line by accident.
You can...
If you need to do any digging on your property, they can trace the line, and you'll know exactly where it is.
How is it secured and just...
It's just put in there with dirt.
Buried in the ditch. It's like a...
At closing of the ditch.
Yeah, it's like an electric line. There's equipment so you can see where it is from the surface without...
If it's a shelved structure, can it go on the higher shelf?
And if we have questions, who would we talk to? Would it be Brandy?
So the water department would be your first discussion, probably the water department.
And anybody who's installing this would know what to do, and this is standard stuff.
That's a common thing, so you can find the water line with a metal detector. Understand?
Okay.
So do you... My understanding, too, is it's a matter of loss of water. If there was a sudden loss of a lot of water and the water department recognized there's a leak somewhere, it would be...